Heavenly Father, please bless the men and women in city government, state, federal government, all the elected officials that have put themselves in harm's way like law enforcement, firefighters, and EMS. In your name we pray.
Amen.
Jan, would you please take a roll call for the last time for me?
Dan Vincent?
Here.
Bob Leahy?
Here.
Jim Hufford?
Here.
Tim Heiss?
Here. Chad Spence? Here. Trust you had a chance to review the consent agenda and he changes. Now I entertain a motion.
I have a question.
Yes.
On the sewage cleaning.
For the Y?
For the Y building?
Before we got it transferred over, there was a backup in the system and we're going after the contractor to collect that as money, but we were making the transfer over to the Y, so we had to clean up that account. So we're going after the contractor. We found a...
Insurance or...
Yeah, we found that they had a...
More of a mesh inside.
Yeah, a mesh inside the sewage line, so debris wouldn't get down in it. They never moved.
And they didn't take it out.
Good question. So do we have a first?
First, that we accept the Minnesota intended agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All his favor, signature by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. All right. Department reports. You've got some special thanks. Jim Hufford, 12 years. Served on area planning and also you...
You're board of earnings appeals and solid waste management.
And also you volunteer for the Journey Home, correct?
Well, no, I'm the president of Journey Home.
Well, okay. Appreciate that. Chad Spence, 14 years.
Roughly.
Replaced Mike Sidle.
Mike Sidle. Mid-term.
Okay. Appreciate your years of service and then your... My condolences for being in that snare. No, you'll do a great job. You've got younger, better-looking... Tim Heiss, 12 years. And before that, your dad was border works?
Yep.
Bob Gentry, where you at? You served on, what was it? You were on border works?
Yeah, for four years.
And you did the five-year park plan? Appreciate your help there. Bob Leahy?
Yes, president.
Felt a cohort of crime with me, have known each other probably since kindergarten. And appreciate...
It's been awhile.
What's that?
It's been awhile.
It's been awhile. Appreciate your four years and your next four years as well.
Thank you.
Dan Vincent?
Uh, thank you.
Money pulling's not here and...
Breaks me up today. Do you have an update?
He's... His wife had another issue over the weekend. And just keep them in prayers. Sounds like they may be transporting her back to Indianapolis. And, but, not only was he served as, been our city manager, but years of service in the police department and whatever else and just, just a great rock to have with this community, so. Do you have anything?
Well, I probably should backtrack a bit. I'll bring that up now because it's not on the agenda.
Steve, you got that?
I do. Do you want me to read the whole thing?
Yeah, just go ahead and, we had the back truck that was for sale. We had one bid and we had a minimum bid and they came in at the minimum bid.
Yeah, minimum bid was $10,000 for a 1997 Victor 2100 combination sewer vac with hydro excavation set. Gary Contracting submitted a bid for $11,101. No sense.
Actually, I'd entertain a motion from council to accept the bid.
Still moved.
Do we have a first or a second?
I'll second.
Jan, would you take roll call vote?
Dan Vincent?
Yes.
Bob Leahy?
Yes.
Jim Hufford?
Yes.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Chad Spence?
Yes. Jan, do you have anything else?
No.
Council members, Dan?
Uh, yeah, I have some questions on the windmill. Had they moved forward on that yet as far as any resolution?
No.
It hasn't moved any further forward than that we were before?
No. They were supposed to issue a chat decree by the end of the year, correct? No. Anything else?
Uh, well, yeah, because I had the information that shows it had moved to the damages stage.
Dan, as I've said, there's nothing else to report.
Well, that's not been reported, has it?
Yes, I reported about three or four weeks ago. I guess you still haven't...
Easy, easy. Don't go there.
No, no, I'll go there. You got anything else to say? If not, we'll move on. Go ahead, if you've got anything else to say.
Bob, did you know anything about that? I didn't think so.
I said at the last meeting, Dan, there was nothing to report.
But there was, but there is to report.
There's nothing to report. Bob, do you have anything?
Nope.
Jim?
No, other than it's been a different 12 years.
Wow.
That one as council's been a little different than others.
Yep.
It's not been awesome. It's alright. I don't have anything.
Chad?
Um, yeah, I had a couple of things. One was the Munich firstness update. If anybody here has not been to the park yet, we had approximately, we had over 800 cars just in two days alone on Friday and Saturday night. And so far, we've raised, we've had more visitors so far than previous years and each year breaks the previous year's record. And we've also raised more funds each year. Each year breaks the previous year's record. And we're getting more and more folks from out of town. Now, the one thing we've had problems with is gauging the efficacy of the billboard. We have an I-70. Because the people work our entrance and exit booths, try to ask people where they're from. And we have a lot of people via that and Facebook that we know are coming from ways off. But again, we're, we've only gotten a couple comments so far that's per the billboard. So just a heads up, if you guys got any feedback for us on that, because we're always trying to gauge, you know, how efficacy or how effective we are in the means of getting the word out to everybody, so. And then the other thing, Ball State, we had a trip at the school. They paid the dean of, or interim chair of telecommunications at Ball State and one of his production team members paid a visit to Union City this past week. Because I've had it, one of my hopes is to have the apothecary, the apothecary building, let's, for some of those who may not know the apothecary building, it's the green building on the corner over here. It's sat empty for now going on decades, unfortunately. And, and we're wanting to get the Ball State Telecommunications Department working with our KISS program because those are strengths. Our KISS program is one of the most unique in the entire state of Indiana. There's very, very few things like it. Very blessed to have it. Telecommunications program at Ball State has been nationally ranked for now decades. Every year, they're one of the finest in the country. So we have the opportunity to pair two strengths. And so they paid a visit to see the KISS lab and I just want to read you here real quick the comment from the interim chair to our superintendent. Said, "Just wanted to send you a note of thanks to you and your staff for your hospitality on Thursday. Ben Strack and I were impressed by the students in the KISS setup and it's obvious that they have true supporters in place with both you and Brian," mentioning, referencing Brian Merrill, head of KISS. "Thanks too for taking us to see the proposed downtown site. The potential in that space is tremendous. I'm hoping we can get some help from our College of Architecture, also a nationally ranked program, students and faculty to provide assistance with design when the time comes. Your idea to create a facility that could create, that could service all the schools in Randolph County is a very smart approach. We have seen the success of these multi-district collaborations in schools on the western edge of Indianapolis as well as in northwest Indiana. Timing is great for creating a relationship between Ball State TCOM and Randolph Eastern Schools. The university has realized that decentralization of program promotion and admissions information will benefit academic departments in the long run. We look forward to working with you to benefit your students and to create a potential pipeline to TCOM. We're proud that one of our alums is your mayor-elect and we appreciate that a teachers' college alum shares his vision. Thanks again and I would personally, we look forward to working with you in 2020." So it was a great message from them and so just wanted to fill everybody in on that initiative and, and that's, I think, all I have.
Thank you very much.
Chad, did the wind do a lot of damage out there?
Oh, God. I was out there eight hours, Thanksgiving night. Restaking and replacing lights. But thank goodness it was calm that night.
Yeah.
It was, oh, yeah, I mean, you couldn't, I mean, there wasn't a leaf moving that night. That was laughed. Is there anyone from the chamber here? Susan's not here. Pinky is at church. Under new business, we have an addition, if you want to pencil in, Eco Vehicle Systems. First item under new business is the area planning appointment. Did we end? Bob, you want to...
Yeah, I'd kind of expressed an interest in that in the last meeting, so.
Well, and we have Tito also expressed interest beforehand. Well, that would be, how about solid waste management?
I'll do that at the end of the day.
Brandon, where'd he go? Yes. Sorry, you were over there. Brandon Amor has pledged to serve on solid waste management. So you want to make that a form of a motion for both or...
Yeah, I would make that a form of motion for both of them to serve in their respective departments.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Jan, would you take roll call vote for Bob and Brandon?
Um, yeah. Dan Vincent?
Yes.
Bob Leahy?
Same.
Jim Hufford?
Yes.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Chad Spence?
Yes. Well, that's great. Now, next person or next on the agenda is the Artist in Residency program. Leta Wilcox?
I'm not here as the judge tonight. I'm here as the president of the Art Depot tonight. But first, I just want to thank Chad for, as the judge, for taking community placements for kids to pay off their fine by working out at the park. That's worked out really well because I don't allow parents to pay fines for juveniles, so they have to pay it themselves. So Chad's been really good about supervising them out at the park.
Pleasure to help.
I'm here tonight not to ask for money, but to ask you to move some money. One of the things that, when I took over at the Art Depot as the president, one of the things that I wanted to do was to see us revitalize the Artist in Residence Program. And you'll see, I gave you some bullet points and a couple of photos. We, Vicky Vardeman and I have been kind of racking our brain about what we could do to find a way to stimulate that Artist in Residence Program. It is, it is a shame to waste those apartments and not have artists here in town. So, Vicky's been working with different representatives from different art departments and she came across a professor at Heron Art, you know...
Artists too.
Yeah, and media, something or other. And they have a student, her name is Cassie Kohe, who was here during the art festival and had her furniture, she's a furniture maker. She'll graduate in May with a degree in furniture design and graphic artistry. She, and I provided you with a couple of copies of pictures of some of her art. Well, in the process of doing some remodeling and refurbishing down at the depot, we had a conversation with Frank Miller Lumber and they are willing to help us with some of the projects we have there. But they were also interested in the Artist in Residence Program. And one of the things that we came up with was a project to reinvigorate that program starting next May. Cassie will graduate next May. She has spent six months in Sweden studying furniture design. She is at the top of her class at Heron. We would like to install her in one of the apartments and the project would be to produce artistic, one-of-a-kind benches that will be placed throughout the city. I know you've all seen the benches and, you know, I think the last one I saw was in Albany. They just purchased a bunch of powder-coated red benches and they look nice, but they're nothing unusual. We would like her to design, and she has already started working on design, of something artistic that stands out and makes them unique. She is extremely interested in the project. We already have five companies in town who are willing to sponsor a bench. So we think that we could probably sell this and we haven't put the squeeze on everybody yet. I'm looking at Bob. So I think that it will be a project that we can, that we can really sell. The catch is, is that Frank Miller Lumber likes this because it, it also helps to market them. It helps improve our quality of life here and it helps market Union City and the Artist in Residence Program. Heron is interested in other artists who might be willing to come, whether it be jewelry makers or sculptors or painters. What we would like to encourage is that we use this as an opportunity for Midwest TV to film part of the design and construction process, which will kind of captivate that audience that Frank Miller Lumber could draw as well. So what I'm asking is, is that we take a portion of the money that was set aside for Midwest TV, the last year now, the council voted three years in a row to set aside $40,000. There is still $30,000 left in the fund for this upcoming year, 2000?
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty. And what I'd like to do is set aside $1,000 a month to pay her a stipend. That works out to about 10 bucks an hour for 25 to 30 hours a week, so she's not going to be getting rich on it. And then do it on a three-month basis. She gets three months, three benches. And then we can renew it for three additional three-month periods. So it'd be over a period of a year. We, we really believe at the depot that we can figure out a way to make this a sustaining project. We have already investigated grants with Indiana Arts Commission, with Community Foundation, and with the National Endowment for the Arts. Because it would be supervised by the depot, which is the 501(c)(3), we can apply for those federal grants. And we've identified five of them in the National Endowment of Arts grants that we would qualify for under that program of Artist in Residence. So that's what I'm asking for, to move $1,000 a month from that existing allotment that you have already designated and that we partner with the Midwest TV process and Frank Miller Lumber to produce these benches. And it's not just a matter of producing the benches, but I think it will lay a foundation for us to have ongoing artists here on a regular basis. So, any questions?
Do you have any idea how many months?
Could be up to a year.
Up to a year, yeah. It's a three-month contract that we would renew possibly for every, for another three...
On a quarterly basis.
Yeah.
Let me...
Yeah, up to one year.
I'd like to add, I met with Cassie and then Linda and her organization. What was cool about it was Cassie was just originally talking about three months. And the longer we talked, because we said, what we're trying to do is capture people like her and youth and, you know, help create a quality of life where people like her would feel invited to live here. And the longer we talked and by the time we got, and it's probably an hour and a half conversation, she goes, "Can I extend it longer than those three months?" She says, "I see this, I could do this for a year." And then she went on to say, "Do you have any other openings? Because there's people that are graduating that are doing some of the work that would like to come here as well." So she's trying to get a, she's getting a meeting set up for Linda and I to meet up with not only her advisor, but some other people at the university.
Do you think it's the way to get our foot in the door? Because Heron is a nationally recognized art school and, and they do everything. I mean, it's not just one particular venue, it's everything. So we're real excited about it. And she's very personable and I think for the first one, you want someone who's outgoing and, you know, can kind of breathe some enthusiasm into the whole process. And she really is. I wish she could have been here tonight, but she's got finals. So, yeah. Any, any other questions?
Yeah, I got another question. It says here the $40,000 is earmarked, you wouldn't take that from the $30,000 that's left, right?
Yes.
Can we do that? Says it's earmarked.
Well, we earmarked it.
Yeah, I know. We have to pass it up.
Just modify it.
That's why I say it's going to have to be.
Yeah, it would just be modified.
Just be, just reappropriate it.
Because right now, you couldn't move.
Right. I think you have to vote to modify.
We have to vote to modify it. Ryan, I have to write it up.
Where is she now?
Um, Cassie.
She's in school.
She's in school.
Still in school.
Yeah, she's graduated. Which is why she wasn't here.
And then she'll be done?
No, she is in May.
Okay, okay. So six months before she'd want to come here?
Right. And, you know, I'm hoping that during that six months, we might be able to figure out a way to even attract others and to get some of these brands.
Miller Lumber, I think the furniture connection's a pretty good idea too.
Yeah. Frank Miller Lumber really liked it. That's what I'd say.
And then there's other, what Greg Hufford's building a wood shop.
Yes, yes, we talked about that. And there's a wood shop guy in Farmland who is interested in doing some work with her too.
Craft furniture, yeah, people are...
Yeah. Anything else? I'd be glad to answer. You know, I love to talk.
Well, I guess, council wanted to have a discussion here in that regard?
Is that what we just did?
Yeah, I think it's a great opportunity to step up to the next level.
This is what we built, this is what it worked.
I'd entertain a motion then.
Not sure I have a form. I'm, I'm moving.
Allocate?
Allocate the, the funds from the Midwest TV fund to the Arts and Residence Project proposal as Linda's presented.
I'll second his motion.
Are we allocating it or reappropriating?
Reappropriate, yeah. Modifying my earmark to reappropriate. Thank you, Dan.
Jan, we have a first and a second. Could you take roll call vote?
Dan Vincent?
Yes.
Bob Leahy?
Yes.
Jim Hufford?
Yes.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Chad Spence?
Yes.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the YMCA loan. Chad, do you want to...
Yeah, we're fortunate to have Mr. Paul Fattis and Ms. Cian Bales here from the YMCA and you guys would like to, yeah, if you don't mind, if you want to go ahead.
Sure, let me stand right here.
Sure, if you want to stand. Yeah, the podium's kind of unavailable right now. It's unavailable.
Well, I'm Cian Bales. I'm the CEO of Record right now from the Randolph County YMCA. Paul Fattis is our board president and Doreen Cooley's here, she's also a secretary. But Chad invited us here to say a few words. But I first want to say thank you, PDU, for all the support you've given us, helping us. This has been a long journey. It's nice for me to be able to be here with Mayor Conklin to be able to say thank you. This is his vision, if you did not know. He was the one that instigated all this, came and connected us through the Y of the church. It's a great testimony of, you know, being, you know, visionary and seeing where we needed to go. So thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate that and all your support you've given us. So, you know, the childcare business is so key to our community. As many of you might know, the Randolph County YMCA, we got into childcare business in 2001. Thought it'd be temporary and now we're embarking on 2020 and we're, and we keep growing the childcare. And because childcare is so important, it's a tough business, but it's, it's an economic development necessity. And if that's different than what it used to be, right? It used to be like, oh, I just need, I think, it wasn't as crucial as it is today. We have worked, you know, double earning parents income and it's vital that if we want to attract businesses here to our community, that we must make sure that we have a quality place for them to keep their children. And the great thing about childcare, that it isn't so much more than babysitting. It's about giving these kiddos the chance they need to really embark on a really good educational career, especially those children who are in, from families who are struggling, low-income, the working poor. Because when you're a parent and you're struggling to make ends meet, the last thing you have time to do maybe is sit down and worry about what kind of educational activities your kids are getting, right? Because you're worried about how to feed them. You're worrying about the necessities. You're still wanting, as a parent, that's what your worries are. And so that's when the Y can come around our children and say, okay, we're going to help the education support the parents. And so that's the beauty of the wise childcare. At the Winchester facility, over 50% of our kids are from low-income. The same is with our Union City facility. And that's, that's because of the OKR grant, but we would have done that anyway. So, you know, we're honored to be a part of that, be a part of this process. But, you know, of course, of here, you know, say on your agenda it says loan, Y loan. You know, I've been in the childcare business a long time. We know it's a very up and down process and if you're never going to make money on childcare, it's definitely mission-based program. We kind of had the perfect storm with this childcare center. We had originally planned, we had agreed upon a date with the architect and, and the church and ourselves, we had picked June 24th to be that opening date and so to, we're a licensed center and so there's, there's certain trainings that our staff have to get. And so we knew that we needed four weeks to train our staff. So we hired staff, many of them from the Union City community, all local people. And we hired 10 staff members and we hired them the day after Memorial Day and unfortunately the facility did not open on June 24th. We opened on August 1st. So if anybody can start doing the math on that of what happened then, we couldn't tell the staff, oh, hey, by the way, thanks for giving up your other job, why don't you just go home and wait for us to open our center without a paycheck? So the Y, we worked very hard to immerse these staff into other programs, absorb them, so we did not charge that to the Union City program. But of course, we couldn't absorb another 10 people and everything. And so between the time that we opened, we incurred a $35,000 debt between that gap and when we really opened August 1st. We have since that time, as an organization, invested $71,000 operational income into the childcare program because even once we opened, we were not full capacity to where we could sustain. It's, it's still not self-sufficient. We, you know, we're confident we're going to get there. Right now, we have 30 kiddos, children, we can take 53. We need 32 full-paying kids to break even. Of those 32, we have seven on scholarships. And so we're still not to capacity. We're losing between $5,000 to $7,000 a month on the program and so it keeps, you know, draining the RIV sources. And again, we're, we're at the point now that we cannot, no longer sustain the program because there's so, you know, there's so much loss operationally from us. Like I said, we've invested, from our operational account, $71,000. And I wish I could say that the Y has these grand bank accounts sitting somewhere with lots of money, but as any other not-for-profit, we do not. We've done the best we could. We actually have maxed out our credit line to continue to support this program. We have never, I've been with the Y for 21 years, we have never subsidized a program to this level before. We are proud. We are not here complaining about having to do that. We are very proud and do it again. But we're here to ask for some help and to help us kind of get over this. We're not asking for the 71... We're not asking for the seventy-one thousand dollars because we feel that that's something that we need to go out and help try to raise with our funders. We're really looking here to ask for the gap that was totally out of the Y's control. That when that didn't happen, you know, that kind of thirty-five thousand. So that's what we're here to talk about. You know, I brought two people to, and he's hiding here. Maybe that's on purpose. He's trying to hide. Steve James, most of you guys know him as Frank Miller Lumber. For me, he was on our board treasurer. And he's no longer on the board. He just stepped down. He termed out of our board in, end of October. But we asked him to be here as well tonight in case anybody has any questions because he was really instrumental in helping getting the Union City facility up. He knows all the financials and is the number guy behind all of this. So I wanted to make sure, didn't want to waste your time. So we wanted to make sure we have our group here to answer all your questions as, as you consider our request.
When we first started these discussions back in, it would have been back in early September, probably, in terms of where we're at and opening late and so forth. You were with twenty-two or twenty-four kids at that point in time.
Correct.
And now you're at thirty.
Correct.
Your Randolph County, or Winchester daycare operations is at full capacity? Is that correct?
There's some rooms, yeah. We always, you can, our center in Winchester, the Bynon Family Childcare Center, it's licensed for a hundred and eleven. We have about ninety-two. We can take, but then there are some rooms that are full that have a waiting list. And so really, and if you know the childcare business, it's kind of like this, you know, we've all, the directors of those facilities are, you know, they're, they're brilliant of how they can move kiddos around and whatnot. So there's rooms that we have a waiting list on. Those, those are your younger rooms, more so than your, than your older rooms. And the same thing with our Union City facility. I know before we even opened, our one of your old room was at, had a waiting list. So we actually immediately went back to the state and asked them to relicense us in a different capacity. Our childcare director, Lynette Clark, had this idea that we could relicense a room in which we were able to take more kiddos, children off the waiting list and get them in for that younger age. But our older age room is not to capacity yet. So, yeah.
Of course, being in the first-year business, like any other business, I've talked to other individuals that have been significant in this whole process. Tom Kearns being one of them and talked about how it's tough. Or any, anybody who's been a business owner or known a business owner, it's tough to, to post profit and be on top of your game within one year or the first year. Most people, you're doing well to break even the first year. And then you look to increase, I've got nods of heads. So that must not be too far off the, okay. Just want to make sure we're right in that. So, um, so that's where we're at. Because we're only, we're not even six months into the actual daycare center being opened. We're nine and a half a year along and it's already approaching at least the threshold. So what questions? And one other thing I did have. Back to the company operators and owners. If you guys wouldn't mind, describe for us, let's start with you, Mr. James. Describe for us the impact for a community, community to be able to offer. And when I, when she talks about daycare, too, we're talking about actual certified daycare. So we're not knocking anybody's grandma that watches kids. We know that may not, that's not considered certified, but that's absolutely critical. Because my mom watched my kids when they were little. So, but we're talking about certified daycare, which there was none available in Union City until this establishment. So if you don't mind, share with us from a company perspective, the impact of the community to be able to have certified daycare for a company trying to attract or retain employees.
Sure. And all of us probably know that workers are a shortage right now, right? It's tough to get workers in there. Again, so childcare is a problem and we don't have workers coming to work on a regular basis. And certainly from Frank Miller's standpoint, that's our number one issue is actually trying to get people fill our open spots. And without the childcare, I mean, you just really, you're, you're limiting yourself in what resource you have available to the worker. I mean, it's a huge impact for us, you know, as, as an employer.
You find anything different, Rob?
No, I agree a hundred percent with Steve, yeah. It's, it's important to, to know that. It's another thing that you can say, or it's another, I guess, objection that you can eliminate.
Got you.
Do you have daycare in the community? If you say no, then there's a good chance they're going to go elsewhere. So, yeah.
Now, is the daycare open to families on the Ohio side also?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Because I've had people say, well, they didn't go over here because they didn't think they'd be allowed.
Yeah, I mean, at the Winchester facility, we have them from all over. If they're commuting in, if they're working in Randolph County. We have a mother who works at the hospital and lives in Fort Wayne and brings her infant to stay at Winchester, at the Winchester site, goes to work and then picks her up and drives back to Fort Wayne.
Yeah, there may be some issues early on with some of the state-funded daycare that they give because we weren't necessarily equipped in getting this.
So, yeah, if you heard that, there could be true things, Steve. There could be truth that there's a voucher program. We were automatically connected with the state of Indiana. And Lynette, our childcare director, had to go out and she was able to work through that we are now still are able to take vouchers from the Ohio side. So basically, a voucher program is if a parent's going to school or they're, you know, trying to better themselves. And based on their income, they can get subsidized childcare. And so, but you have to be certified. The, the state, Ohio or Indiana, will not give that to, I agree with you, Chad. My mother-in-law watched my, you know, son. So, you know, but you couldn't get that. It has to be a certified program. And so the Y is able to take vouchers from both.
This would be something that we need to get out to the public.
Correct.
On the Ohio side, I think I've been getting that kind of feedback.
That's good feedback. I'll let Lynette know. Thank you.
So the, the loan request is for thirty-five thousand. And what would the term you'd like to see?
Well, I mean, that's, you know, we're going back to the city on that. We would like to be considered, you know, zero percent. And we would like to have a clause in there to understand that we can pay our, our credit lines if there's drawing interest. If you would allow us that once the childcare is making that money, if you allow us to go out and get that and get that paid off first. And then, you know, we are, you know, we can write in that, you know, this is where your attorneys come in, right? And make sure we're both protected, right? I mean, that the city's protected and that the Y's protected to make sure that we're going in here and being good stewards of people's money. And so making sure that, you know, however you want to write it, you know, we'll be able to prove, you know, where we've got the credit line at First Merchants and how much is drawn on it and, you know, where it's at. So we can make sure that we're transparent and provide everything you need to make sure that we can pay you back. But we would like that consideration. Again, that, in that, in my mind, that's making us better stewards of donors' money by getting the, one is drawing interest first.
So, I mean, and Chad, this really falls back on, you know, on you. Would you like to see it for thirty-five years, zero interest? Set it up for three years and be, be renewable after that for X amount of years? What do you guys think?
What if you put something in there contingent on the fact that they're at least above breaking even?
That's, that's what.
You know what I'm saying? You don't want to break them even and they got to start making payments back.
Right, that's a great point. And that's what we talked about.
It's, it's open for how many kids out there?
It's thirty right now. We can take fifty-three.
Fifty-three eventually. So set a number of like, when they get to forty kids, because they will. That they, that's when they would have to start worrying about.
That's a good suggestion.
I was saying that the payback would be, would have to begin in time to three years.
Well.
Because to see if they got to ramp up to that, that's, I'm just.
True, but I, the one thing we don't want to cut ourselves short, though, if they do ramp up to forty kids, because they've gotten up to thirty within less than six months.
We just had twenty-nine two weeks ago. You got thirty.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I would need to see us cut ourselves short if they do, they're able to pay their creditors back in, in next year. And then by year two, they could be.
I mean, I'd leave it, I mean, not put any requirements on how they pay, but just leave it up to three years. And it could be renewable if they want to pay it off early.
Can we just move this forward on contingent on the details being hammered out with Ryan?
Yeah, are you comfortable with that? That, that we've, I, it sounds like there's a consensus to approve the bones of it.
We can approve it and then have it worked out the details and everything.
And yes. And, I mean, that's.
That's a good idea.
Favorable in their, their direction because it's, hey, it's all about the kids, man.
Yeah, 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 agreeing. Well, we need a.
We need a motion.
I'll make the motion that we.
Time, time right now, as soon as possible?
Um, yes, yeah. And so what we're.
We don't want, this is our last meeting. That's why I'm asking to.
Right, yeah, exactly. Yeah, because we've exhausted all our, all of our credit.
Can I, let me just make this motion, suggestion for a motion. Because I can make a motion. We'll make it for thirty-five thousand, zero interest for three years. And it's, and it's renewable after that. And then, subject to next council, you guys can revisit if you need to change the language or anything like that.
Yeah, that'll start it off.
Just to get it, get the money back in your hands.
Yes, but as far as when we issue the check, can that be after the first of the year? We do not have funds appropriated at this right now.
Oh.
January second. So, the checks in the mail?
I've never heard that before.
So could somebody make a motion for me?
Dan.
Dan started, too.
What's that?
You started the motion.
Oh, okay, yes. I'd move that we loan the YMCA the thirty-five thousand to meet their budget shortfall contingent on the details, three-year, renewable, three-year. And again, I would still say that you put a number of kids in there that says that, you know, Ryan can talk about that, but that's.
The only thing I'll, I'll say is, as we said before, it's hard to put a number on the kids because we have scholarships. So, but if you say forty and I got twelve kids a scholarship, I'm still not breaking even. And that's no problem.
Well, that's what I mean. We want to make sure that they're breaking even.
You know, a number of full-time kids, that's fine. But when you start putting the number of kids, it's, it's a little.
Whoever's your next chief financial officer at the city.
Okay, we have to structure this as a motion. Thirty-five years, zero interest.
How many years?
Thirty-five thousand. Renewable after that. Check, January second. We, we need that, so, Jan, you put it in the minutes. Needs to be consistent, so.
So that's Dan.
Dan, are you okay with that?
Yes, I am, absolutely. You can write it out as many times as you want.
I will second that.
Jan, thirty-five thousand, zero interest, three years, renewable by the next council. After that, check will be available January second.
So moved.
We have a first and a second?
Okay. You need to vote, right?
We need a vote.
Dan Vincent.
Yes.
Bob Lahey.
Yes.
Jim Hufford.
Yes.
Tim Heiss.
Yes.
Chad Spence.
Yes.
Cian, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is Eco Vehicle Systems, Mr. Rob Likens. Stand down on the end.
Yeah, that's fine. That's pretty good. I might run for council. All right, Mayor Conklin, council. Thanks for having me tonight. Unfortunately, I'm, I'm here, I think a little bit out of necessity, out of ridiculousness maybe is a better way to put it. As a lot of you that know me probably understand, I'm not a social media guy. I don't spend a lot of time on social media. But apparently, the last several weeks, there's been some posts on social media, you know, saying some derogatory things about me, my, my employees, my company, like in some cases, my family and, you know, it goes on down the line. So you can take that stuff for so long and then you finally say, maybe I ought to show up and defend myself, which is crazy. But I know it's election season or it was election season. There's, there's a lot of divisiveness and jealousy, envy, I don't know what it is. But it seems like, I know Brian deals with it quite a bit. Certain members of this council deal with it. But, and I'm okay. I mean, if you challenge me and I've done something wrong that's true or, you know, I've done something, you know, I've been accused, I think, basically of theft, cheating, stealing, whatever the case may be, which is all ridiculous. It's one thing if you've done it, then you can handle it that way. But, you know, when it's lies and, you know, slander, whatever you want to call it, unfortunately, you have to do things like this. So there's even people I've never heard of, I've never met, I'm pretty sure they don't know me, who are going online and, and saying things, not just saying things and writing, but looking at a camera and challenging me. So if any of those people are here, I'm here now. So if you've got something to say to me, say it to my face, because that's how I deal with things, so.
Like right now?
Yeah, absolutely, right now, yeah. Excuse me? Absolutely.
He asked, and he's.
State, state your name and your address.
Christopher Milbury.
Address?
Three Eighteen South Meridian Street. So here's what I'd like to know.
City and state?
Winchester, Indiana.
Thank you.
So here's what I'd like to know. First of all, why is he sitting at the council seat?
Because the podium's up against the wall.
Okay, did anyone else that addressed the council speak from up there?
Doesn't matter.
No, not from the podium, but it's against the wall.
Is there, do you have a question, sir?
Well, yeah, he just, I just wanted to make sure that we were addressed because he was.
Hey, ask your question. I'm right here.
I don't have any questions.
You see me? Okay.
Whoa, 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 wait a minute.
Let us go on.
I don't understand.
Chill down here. You don't, you're not the boss of me.
Hey, guys, let me speak, let me speak. I'm here to speak, please.
Excuse me, one second.
Shut. Thank you.
You're ridiculous. Yeah, I'm not really sure. He asked me a question.
My aunt's, ask the question, please.
Well, I, I didn't exactly hear what he said. He had some paperwork here.
I'm going to go ahead and proceed if that's okay.
Sure.
If you're okay with that. All right, Mayor Conklin, Union City Council. Thanks for the opportunity to join you tonight to clear the air regarding my past, present and future efforts to create jobs in my hometown and to give generously to help those who are less fortunate. I have to admit, I'm extremely shocked, disappointed in the behavior of certain council members, Union City citizens and even outsiders like him, who I've never heard of or met. Never thought I'd be treated this way, you know, given our track record of over twenty years of doing our best to do great things for our community. I love this community. I've literally spent the majority of my working life trying to improve it. I don't know if you guys know that or not. Again, since I'm here, I think to defend myself against baseless and false attacks on me, my company, my company's reputation and character, and my character. And since certain Union City citizens and elected officials have chosen to slander my name to others outside of our community, hence our visitor, even going to the extent to spread lies and rumors on social media, I thought it might be best for me to start from the beginning. rumors on social media, I thought it might be best for me to start from the beginning, because there's, I think, most of you in here know me, I have some family in the back there, I've got some family over here, by the way, the second row there is the EBS management team, they're not real happy about this crap either, and then Matt's a member of our management team up front as well, so, I want to go from the beginning, I guess. I'm gonna try to keep my cool here, I'm not used to this. So I was born here in Union City in nineteen sixty-eight, at Union City Memorial Hospital, you guys remember that place? My mom was even born there, wasn't your mom?
Yep.
Not too, not too long before me, unfortunately. My brother Joe's sitting on the end, he was born in that hospital, and my sister Angie, who's not here tonight, she was born there as well. We're third-generation Union City citizens, grew up here, as I said, mom went to Catholic schools, and then went to Mocinawal Valley, until I came along and they threw her out, because I came along. Mom was barely sixteen years old when she had me, Brenda, you know all this. She was barely sixteen years old when she had me. The day I turned six months old, on five thirteen sixty-nine, my biological dad, Bob Lickens, was killed in a car accident. You guys were at the funeral, I'm sure. My mom was stuck there with a six-month-old baby and no husband, so, for pretty, I always say she's the strongest person I know, and that's why, that's one of the many reasons why I say that. Mom ended up marrying Herschel Ray, who was the only dad I ever knew, I was two years old, along came Joe over there, and then my sister Angie, so, the three of us. Dad worked at Union City Body Company for around twenty-two, twenty-three years, I want to say.
Almost thirty.
Almost thirty years. Thirty years, until multiple health issues forced him into an early disability retirement, unfortunately. My brother Joe was born in nineteen seventy-one, again, same hospital, my sister Angie in nineteen seventy-seven. We grew up with not a whole lot of money. Some months, no money, right, mom? But here's what I knew, I knew we had a ton of love in that house, and we learned a work ethic and values from our parents that have made all of the successes in our chosen careers and what we've chosen to do. I graduated from Union City Community High School in nineteen eighty-seven, played basketball, football, a little baseball there, paid my own way through college, my parents couldn't afford to put me through college, so I went out myself, took out loans, I worked three jobs while I was in college, finished an internship as well, graduated from Ball State in nineteen ninety-two. Moved to Indianapolis in September nineteen ninety-two with my high school sweetheart, Amy, now my wife, she was in dental hygiene school then, at the University of, well, UI-PUI, I call it, I-U-P-U-I. I took a job at Comcast Sound Communications right out of college, I have that wonderful T-COM degree from Ball State University, so, wanted to put that to work right away. Then we found out we were expecting our first child in nineteen ninety-three. Amy and I were married in February ninety-four, right here in Union City, and we knew, once we started having children, we want to move back to our hometown to be around family. Talked about the daycare, it was my daycare back there, between my brothers and sisters and mom and dad, and Amy's mom and dad, and grandparents, the whole nine yards. Our daughter Alyssa was born in nineteen, in July of nineteen ninety-four, she's a two-thousand-and-thirteen graduate of UCCHS. People talk about stress, you know, when you're in business, when you're running businesses, you have a lot of stress, and people always tell me I seem to handle it relatively well, and I say, let me tell you what stress is. About the time that we got married, within a six-month period, we sold a house in Indianapolis, we sold it on contract, which didn't work out, we bought a house in Union City, I changed jobs, Amy graduated from college, we got married, and we had a baby, we did all that in a six-month period, so, that's stress. I took a job at UTA in Burn, Indiana, with no manufacturing experience whatsoever. Mike Talaga, who couldn't be here tonight, was our, actually Scott Pugh back there, we both, and as well as Joe, we all worked for Mike Talaga, he's our general manager now at EBS. Mike taught us a lot, he, I mean, I give him all the credit in the world for my knowledge of manufacturing, probably most of us sitting here can say that as well. Allowed me to be promoted four times in five years, eventually go to the corporate office, made some incredible contacts, and really put myself in a position that, I said to myself, I'm an entrepreneur, I always want to have my own business, I thought, man, if the opportunity ever came around, I think I could hire enough talented people, like the people sitting over there, I could probably start a manufacturing business. Never in a million years that I think that would happen in Union City, but it did. Unfortunately, again, some of this is personal, and there's reasons why I'm saying this, in nineteen ninety-seven, I'm going to graduate school and trying to put some plans together, I was diagnosed with the most aggressive, fastest-spreading type of melanoma you can have. Ended up having surgery, you know, went through the treatment stuff that you do for cancer, lucky, I beat it. Our second daughter Cory was born in nineteen ninety-seven, Cory graduated from Union City Community High School in two thousand and six, and is currently a senior at University of Indianapolis studying political science and pre-law, she'll graduate in May. Nineteen ninety-nine, that opportunity we talked about came about, Workhorse Custom Chassis had come here, and the purchasing manager at the time, Jim Johnson, called me one day, he and I worked together in a previous life, and he said, you've always told me you'd love to have your own business, what if I told you you got the opportunity to do it in your hometown? I thought he was nuts. He said, you've got the opportunity here, we need somebody to do sub-assemblies in Union City, I know you, I know your capabilities, I know you know people that can come help you do this, if you can go hire the people and borrow the money and put the deal together, you've got four months to make it happen, if you can pull all that off, then you're in. Went home, talked to my wife, she told me I'm crazy, we're not doing it, go tell them no. Anybody knows Jim Johnson, he doesn't take no for an answer. So I went back, talked to Jim, ended up putting a deal to start a company, Productive Concepts Incorporated, PCI, back in nineteen ninety-nine. We started the business November first nineteen ninety-nine, so it was twenty years ago, mom was the first employee I hired, good move, still works for us today, and I started off living my dream, you know, creating jobs in Union City, there were seven of us when we started, myself and six others, there wasn't any management salary and hourly, I drove chassis, I built boxes, I built bumper, you know, we did everything together, which is, we relate back to those days sometimes, laugh. But that's why I started creating jobs for this community, and frankly, taking risks for this community. I was, I didn't have money back then, you know, I didn't, I didn't have the money to be able to fund this whole thing, so, we did come to the city of Union City, we came to the Randolph Economic Development Corporation, we said, here's our business plan, here's what we want to do, Workhorse is our only customer, understand there's some risk, but would you help us? I want to say the city loaned us maybe sixty-five grands, somewhere around there, REDC loaned us sixty-five grand, and I went and borrowed a hundred and thirty thousand, I think, at the bank, personal guarantees, put my house up, the whole nine yards, to launch this thing. Those, at that time, those were the risky loans. Those were risky. I had one customer, if that one customer goes away, we're out of business. I had limited resources, had to borrow all the money. The loan that we're going to talk about later, zero risk, and I'll explain that here in a little bit. That's where a lot of the rumors started. Luckily for us, you know, through a lot of hard work, that business grew, PCI grew rapidly, right out of the gate. We paid off both loans, the county and the city, with interest, well before the maturity dates, and continued to grow our business. Eighteen months in, we're up to fifty-five employees, I'm adding on to my building, we're buying more equipment, we continue to invest in the business. That gave me a vision, and some of you will remember this, there was a time when we were renting every abandoned building in town, the business just kept growing, kept growing, kept growing, not just because of the Workhorse success, but we took on other customers as well, so if there was an empty building in town, we were probably renting it, and that leads to a lot of inefficiencies, a lot of quality issues, whatever the case may be, so I realized, I might have to bite the bullet someday, build a new facility and get everything under one roof. So mom and I were coming back from Muncie one day, we drove by the field out there by UCBC, and I said to her, talking about vision earlier, I said, mom, I want to buy that cornfield and build a new plant there and start an industrial park, remember that, mom?
Yeah.
She said, well, figure out a way to do it. So after we, you know, continued to struggle and paying ridiculous gas bills and all the inefficiencies and quality issues, we bit the bullet in two thousand and one, again, went and borrowed two-point-nine million dollars and built a, built a new facility, bought the industrial park, built a brand-new facility, same facility we're in to this day. We started the industrial park with a vision, again, our business was growing, Workhorse was growing, we wanted to lure other businesses here, whether it be our suppliers, Workhorse suppliers, whoever it may be, to bring more jobs to Union City, you know, to continue to fill that industrial park up. That's now happening, take a little bit longer than we thought, but that's now happening. So again, it was always at the forefront of my mind, how do we create more jobs for Union City, whether it's me creating them directly or bringing other folks to Union City to do the same. Two thousand and two, in May, our son Lucas was born, he's now a junior at Union City High School. We did finally break ground on Progress Industrial Park, September two thousand and three, we built the new plant. Between two thousand and three, two thousand and four, we moved in there in February two thousand and four, fifteen years ago, hard to believe, almost sixteen years. About the same time, Union City Body Company was closing their doors, they had shut down their operations, I'd got a phone call from Andrew Tates at the time, who asked me if I would be interested in signing a contract manufacturing deal with Grand Vehicle Works, which is a parent company of UCBC at the time, to try to reopen the plant and keep those jobs here. After lots of negotiating, back and forth, right before I met you, I think, Matt, we ended up striking a deal to take over that workforce, again, saving more jobs and creating more. Within just a few months, we hired two-hundred-and-thirty-one employees, including the, most of the entire laid-off workforce for previous UCBC, and if you combine UCBC and PCI operations together, we're almost two-hundred-and-fifty strong. We got all the major customers back, UPS, Frito-Lay, Aramark, FedEx, all those. After stabilizing the workforce, adding our lean manufacturing systems to drastically improve quality, and making the company profitable again, unfortunately, GBW breached our agreement, sold the business to Utilmaster. That was a big, big hit to take, you know, I'm thirty-some years old and didn't really have anything but success up to that point, and we got, we got taken on that deal. That's when I met Matt, Matt worked for a law firm in Indianapolis, and of course, I was held bent on suing these guys, trying to get our money back, and so we met under bad circumstances, but good friends to this day. Around two thousand and six, we launched our alternative fuels division. We started building hybrid electric vehicles for Azure Dynamics and LPG, which is propane trucks for UPS. As most of you probably know, that became our calling card, we became the largest alternative fuels conversion plant in North America, again, creating more jobs. Two thousand and six, I went and bought the former UCBC buildings, after they had shut down, sold to Utilmaster and moved everything, I bought those buildings from the REDC in two thousand and six with the intention of expanding into them. Again, always thinking about creating more jobs. We ended up buying the former UCO building, which we still have today, in two thousand and six as well, and we did expand our operations over there, we set up our upfit operations there, had our alternative fuels operations in the other building. Around two thousand and eight, I ended up buying an armored vehicle business down in Dayton, Ohio, and I moved those jobs here to Union City as well. As a result of our alternative fuels efforts, Richard Luger actually named me an energy patriot, a Luger Energy Patriot in two thousand and eight, for our clean energy efforts, and I was able, I was thrilled to be able to sit on clean, clean energy discussion panels with climate activists such as Ed Begley Jr. and other energy patriots who had been assigned by, by Richard Luger. In two thousand and nine, more personal tragedy, my sister, who, again, who isn't here tonight, was diagnosed with brain cancer, she had brain surgery, chemo, radiation. About that same year, the recession hit, you guys remember the ugly recession about ten years ago, and it damn near knocked us out of business, to be honest with you. December twenty-third, two thousand and nine, I think it was, I came out here to meet with Brian and a few other people, we had the economic development folks over, and I explained to Brian that, hey, you know, we're getting, we're getting beat up in this recession like everybody else, we're this close to landing some incredible contracts and really knocking this thing out of the park, but I'm not sure we're going to make it. You know, at that time, we had laid off everybody but maybe ten or twelve employees, some of you were there, it was not a fun time. Mayor Conklin and the council came to us a few days later, started asking me a lot of questions, how close are you to the GM deal, how close are you to this end dot thing, you know, what's your, what's your confidence level, are you going to win these things? They did the research, they started vetting what I was telling them, started investigating, trying to find out, let's figure out a way to make this work. They came back to me and said, if you're willing to take the risk, we'll loan you some money to try to get you out of this. I borrowed five-hundred thousand dollars from the city to stabilize our business, and it saved our business, not just saved it, but allowed us to grow and thrive. So another big, a huge win-win for the community with existing jobs saved as well as new jobs created long-term. I paid back every dime of that money with interest, and I even made additional donations as a token of my appreciation for sticking with us, some of you were here then, donated a vehicle to the UCPD, donated, I think, thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars as a thank you, so, we went above and beyond as appreciation of, you know, what this relationship has meant to me and my companies. As I promised, we won the largest alternative fuels project in U.S. history when GM awarded us the prestigious CNG factory program, which was lots of new jobs immediately, you guys may remember that, that was in two thousand and ten, most of you were working with us back then as well. Right behind the GM contract, we won a huge Indiana Department of Transportation propane contract, six-hundred-and-some vehicles, which at that time was the largest alt-fuels contract in the state of Indiana, more jobs, hiring more people, investing in more equipment, the whole nine yards. Luckily for me, and I think some of us as well, the business was growing like crazy, we had won these two high-profile contracts, the people that we had beaten in the process of winning the contracts didn't like to lose, so they came chasing us and wanted to, wanted to buy us, and I think what they wanted to do was buy the entire business, and in most cases, they wanted to buy the entire business and move it out of Union City. So I ignored the offers for a long time, Matt was telling me I was crazy, eventually started listening. I went to California to three suitors who were bidding against each other to buy our company, two out of the three told me right to my face, I mean, I'm going to tell you the numbers, ridiculous numbers, that they were going to offer me, but they were going to shut this thing down, they were going to move it to California, two out of the three said that, and I told them no. I said, I don't care how much money you're offering me, you're not moving these jobs out of my hometown, I wouldn't be able to sleep at night doing that. The third company I went to was Emco. I went right out of the gate, Matt's team was working with me then as well, and said, here's the rules, the jobs stay in Union City, lots of rules, lots of strings tied to this deal, and I agreed to sell one division of the company, which is the alternative fuels division, versus the entire company. So again, lots of strings attached to make sure that, you know, we wanted, it was great money, all that kind of stuff, but at the end of the day, we want to make sure those jobs stayed here, and I'm telling you, nobody in this room would have done what I did, you would have taken the big, big, big check, and you would have been out of here. So I'm proud that I did that, I'm glad I did it to this day. When I sold the alternative fuels division in late two thousand and ten, I sold it for enough money that myself and my family never had to work again if we so chose, all these people sitting here can attest to that. I'm not bragging, I'm just telling you that's what happened, it's public knowledge if you want to look it up. At the time, I was forty-one years old, not nearly ready to retire, and frankly, you know, I just lived the entrepreneur's dream, I just won these huge contracts in my hometown, became a multimillionaire almost overnight, it's like hitting the lottery, and you think, you know, you have some responsibility when you hit the lottery, what are you going to do with it? You put it in your pocket and go to Florida and sit on a beach the rest of your life, or you can invest back in your community, and that's what I chose to do. Second thing I did was, I loaded mom and dad up on an airplane, we flew down to Florida. And I always told them, I said, one day I'm going to hit it big, mom, when I do, I'm going to buy you and dad your dream house in Florida. So we did, we went down for, I don't know how many trips, but we looked at a lot of houses and ended up buying their dream house in Florida, and they spent nine good years down there, I believe it was, eight or nine good years down there. That was in two thousand and eleven. Momentum kept going. That following year, we won the GMC and G truck program, that was after the Emco sale. What we'd done with Emco is, we kept the Plant Two facility, which is the old UCO, where we did the alternative, or we did the upfit, Emco did the alt-fuels conversions in our main plant, the one that I built, great partnership, and we were going out to the AT&amp;Ts, and we were winning contracts together, so everybody would win, including the Union City community. That's about the time when I spun the rest of the former PCI operations off into Plant Two and renamed it Eco Vehicle Systems, that's where the name came, a lot of people asked me that, where that name come from, that's how that happened. We grew employment levels back to around one-hundred-and-fifty-five employees combined with both of us, so continuing that theme of creating more jobs. Unfortunately, in two thousand and thirteen, I was diagnosed with cancer for the second time, also beat cancer for the second time in two thousand and thirteen, and then my sister's cancer returned in two thousand and fourteen, so it was just like, and again, I'm not, I'm not saying this for sympathy, when you own a business, you know, it's life, we all have medical challenges, we all have issues going on, but, you know, put yourself in the mindset of someone who just basically hit the lottery, why did I continue to come into work, why did I continue to work crazy hours, why did I continue to work all the weekends? Starting to wonder what the hell's wrong with me. Anyway, my sister had a second brain surgery, chemo, radiation, had a really tough time, and beat it back again as well. Two thousand and eighteen, her tumor showed signs of growth again, so more chemo through the entire, this past summer she just finished not too long ago, I'm happy to report, thank God, she's doing well now. Emco ended up selling their business to a competitor called Westport back in July two thousand and sixteen. I had that information before almost anybody else in this community, for a couple of reasons. I was getting calls from my old customers who were displeased with Emco, number one, asking if I would get back into the game, put the same team back together. GM also made a huge investment down here, as you guys may know, we won that contract with all the shift-through codes and all the time they put into this, so, they needed someone to continue to run trucks for them. I also had really good contacts at Westport, so when I called Westport and I said, hey, this is before I made the decision to get back in the game, I called Westport and said, what are you going to do with the Union City plant, they said, we're going to shut it down. Before any of them even knew that they were going to lose their jobs, I knew it. So I started putting together a business plan to get back in the game, if you will. I was still running my upfit business, pseudo-part-time, I was spending a lot of time in our place in Florida, playing a lot of golf, living a good life, enjoying it. Decided I'm not going to watch these people lose their jobs, I'm going to go back in, and not only that, I mean, I love these people, obviously, but I also saw an opportunity to put together what I think is the best business plan yet, and that's what we have today. So I'm going to stop right there, I'm going to ask a question to everybody, you just heard, you know, kind of where I started and where we were, you know, as of two thousand and sixteen. By a show of hands, how many people here would have risked their own money to restarted business in Union City after have sold it for millions of dollars just six years prior? Any hands go up? So I am crazy. I didn't think so. Well, that's exactly what I did, and that's exactly why the city felt compelled to offer economic development incentives. And for you guys that don't understand that, you know, anytime you're going, whether you're expanding or growing or whatever, it's very standard practice, Matt actually has another business that does economic development incentives, it's very standard practice for communities to offer economic development incentives, reasonable economic development incentives, they're all over the board. I can tell you that when word got around that I was back in the game, you know, I have a lot of good customers and, you know, pretty good reputation, other communities came calling, they really did, and offered a hell of a lot more money than Union City ever thought about offering for us to take these jobs, whether it's two-hundred or fifty or twelve, they didn't care, they knew our business, they knew the potential. So we did have a lot of other communities chasing us. Again, I'm from Union City, I'm a Union City guy, they all knew, I think at the end of the day, they all knew I'm going to end up here. But council and Mayor Conklin came and said, we want to do, we want to do some economic development incentives, you know, let's talk about it. Unfortunately, you know, some of the same crap that's going on right now went on in Randolph County about that time, after I bought the restaurant, so typically, the county will step up and offer the economic development incentives, if someone didn't like me or whatever the case may be, envious, jealous, whatever the case may be, so, they decided not to even hear us, you know, Matt went on my behalf and presented what we're doing, and they basically slammed the door and said, go away, which, which I wasn't real happy with, obviously. But again, Union City stepped up and said, we're going to, now, Union City didn't just Union City didn't just step up and say, "Hey, how about a bunch of money here? Rob, here's a check. Good luck, we'll see you next time." They did an excruciating vetting process that I guarantee you, no other business owner has ever been through. It was ridiculous. But, you know, again, I didn't need, I didn't have to have the money, I could have done this. Matter of fact, I put my own money in to start this business, as these people can attest to. And this was just kind of a nice offer of, "Let us help you along the way. We appreciate what you're doing. You're doing this when you don't have to." So I appreciate that. So that's basically what happened from then until where we are now, or I'll say up to So despite what some of you may have heard, said, or dreamed up in your little minds, you just got the truth. That's exactly what happened. The city, this county, and this region, including Dark County in Ohio, have all benefited greatly from the hard work myself and those people sitting back there have put in for over 20 years now. And those are the facts. In 2016, as I, as I said, I actually went in and purchased the old Emco assets. I cut a deal with Emco before they completed the deal with Westport to purchase those assets so we could go back and fire the plant back up. I bought those assets with my own money. I wrote a check out of my own account to buy those. That was August 1st, 2016. Which also means I was paying many of the former PCI Emco workforce out of my own pocket for several months until we could get the plant up and running and generate revenue. Again, by a show of hands, how many of you do that? No hands? I didn't think so. And by the way, when we relaunched this business, we raised our starting wage to the second highest, I believe this is the case, it was at the time, second highest starting wage in Randolph County. And that's still the case today. So not only are we creating jobs, we're creating decent-paying jobs, it's important that you attract and retain good people, and that's how you do it. That's one way you do it. We also have full benefits. Jennifer's our HR gal over there, so she can answer any of those questions you may have later. So bottom line, we've worked tirelessly to get the business relaunched from scratch and to build it into a respected, trusted, and profitable company once again. We've achieved, achieved that in three years, really two and a half years, because the first six months was just us trying to get back on our feet. It has taken a little bit longer than we anticipated, we acknowledge that, but we've done it thanks in part to the support of this administration and that amazing team and some that aren't here that we've assembled at EBS. I'm proud of that. As far as the jobs outlook, you know, why are we sitting here talking about all this? We're sitting here talking about it because of the BS rumors, but we're also sitting here talking about it because we didn't create 200 jobs in three years. That's what we signed up for. At the time, we signed up for those numbers, those seemed like gaudy numbers. Matt and I and some of his associates were talking about the United States Postal Service contract and thinking, "If that hits, you're talking five, six, seven, maybe 800 jobs." So Matt, he's conservative, I'm a little more aggressive. Matt said, "We're not gonna call it that. Really go low, go low on the 200." That's what we did. Unfortunately for us, out of our control, the USPS contract, it's public knowledge, you can research it, it was delayed, it was supposed to be awarded in 2018, it was delayed in 2018, it was delayed again in 2019, and it is anticipated to be awarded in 2020. That is the main reason why we missed the job creation target. However, I'm fully, I'm the eternal optimist, I'm fully confident, I'm on the front lines with this, you'll hear some of that later, these jobs will come here in time, it just didn't happen by December 31st of this year. Some other benefits of having successful businesspeople in your community that, you know, some of you may not think about or don't care, but I'm gonna say it anyway. I've been running successful businesses, not just this one, but others, in my hometown for over 20 years and creating jobs for our citizens. I've given back to my community with donations, sponsorships, and many other philanthropic endeavors. And I'm not one to do this typically, it bothers me that I have to, because I do a lot of stuff behind the scenes nobody knows about, but when some of the crap that's been thrown out there has been thrown out there, you know, sometimes you have to defend yourself. So I'm gonna throw out a few numbers here as far as what we've chosen to do. Not because they may force us to, but because we know it's the right thing to do. We give a $10,000 scholarship to a graduate senior at UCC HS, well UCJSHS now, Union City Junior Senior High School. With this year's donation, that's $80,000 we've given away to a high school senior. Your son benefited from one of those. And 90% of these kids have graduated and done exactly what they're supposed to do, so it's money well spent. We've been giving scholarships for sports, and I mean, where's Scotty? Was Scotty just here? Scotty asked me for money more than anybody I know. Have I ever told you no? Have I ever told you no? I don't think so. We probably give 2,500 a year roughly to Union City sports activities. We just committed to it, we're gonna have a press event here real soon. We're doing $100,000 donation to the Light Foundation. And I, when, when we quote-unquote hit the lottery, if you want to call it that, one of the first things I did after we bought mom and dad's house, I set up a family foundation so we could put money in and give to mainly youth, as you'll see as you go through this. Most of the, most of the money that we give benefits youth. We do other various Light Foundation events every single year, which, which benefits about 7,500 kids a year. I mentioned the van earlier that we've given away. We've given thousands of dollars to the Arts Festival. I was part of the founding committee that came up with the Arts Festival, I'm proud to say that. We give money to that every year. Community Christmas, you know, we've given thousands of dollars over the year to Community Christmas. We helped the Union City Fire Department a few years purchase a new, a new engine. And again, I don't, I don't even like standing here, it's ridiculous that I even have to do this, because none of this should even be public knowledge. So on that note, there's a bunch more, I'm gonna stop there. I think this is even more important. If you look at the, the impact that my company's PCI Eco Vehicle Systems, R&amp;D Holdings, there's a couple others, have had on this community over the years. We have a payroll of between 2.5 and $3 million a year. So our employees, that's a lot of money going into your community that gets turned over many times. We pay personal property taxes, over $20,000 a year, and that's growing because we continue to invest. I funded my own trip to DC this past April with Brian and Greg Beimer and our lobbyists to meet with Vice President Pence, several congressmen, senators, and others to try to lure that USPS project here. And would I benefit from that if it came? Hell yeah, I would. That's not the main reason why I'm doing it. This community benefits. This community benefits in the way of hundreds if not thousands of jobs. We spent a ton of time on that, Brian can attest to that, between him and myself and Greg Beimer conference calls. We actually signed up, the county decided they couldn't pay for all of the expenses for the lobbyists, so I agreed, again, out of my company fund, Jen writes the checks, to pay a third of the lobbyist fees. Nobody had, we didn't have to do that. So we did that as well. My personal investment, since we relaunched the business, is over $2.3 million. That's used to buy inventory equipment, fund operations. A lot of people don't know this, I acquired a company called Mainstay Alternative Fuels out of Greenville, South Carolina, and moved that operation to Union City. Was that two years ago, Jen?
Yeah.
About two years ago? Again, creating more jobs. I acquired another company called Stock over in Elwood, Indiana, moved those jobs to Union City. That was about a year ago, a little over a year ago. We're actually in negotiations as we speak for additional acquisitions of partnerships that will continue to create jobs here. R&amp;D Holdings is another company I own. I started that in 2001 when I had the vision of buying the industrial park. That's my real estate holdings company. We've got property here and in Florida, had property in Muncie for a while as well. Our property taxes we pay is around $160,000 a year. I've got about 80 acres of industrial park land available for new business attraction. We've gone through the process of making it quote-unquote shovel-ready, not certified shovel-ready, but everything's there as proven by the new construction going on out there now. So I took the risk, this is another question I have, I took the risk in 2001 of investing in real estate in Union City. Not, not, not to buy a house, you know, not, not to buy some farm ground, but millions of dollars. How many of you would invest in Union City real estate in 2001 and hope you would make it? Not too many. I'm happy to say it's paid off in a big way, and this whole community has benefited as a result. We just recently, about a week ago, signed a lease on the former AAA Interstate Building, which is right across the street from us on 32, and we're gonna be putting some more operations in there this spring. So again, more jobs coming because of that as well. Aside from the financial benefits that this community has realized as resolve our efforts, the other thing that I've done, and again, I'll list a few of these, but when we had success and I realized that my community, my employees played a key role in that success, especially this administration and previous administrations as well, I've had a good relationship since we started the business. I decided I need to volunteer my time, not just money, but time. So you guys probably, most of you have sat on some sort of a board with me sitting in this room, I'm sure, you know, all over the, not just here, but Dark County. I was on the Economic Development Group over in Muncie for a while. But just a few things that I did. In concert with Mayor Hoover installed back in 2005, we started the Union City Community Economic Development Committee. A lot of you have probably remembered, it's called Union City Redefined, right? We started that. We started that specifically to try to get the Ohio side of Union City to play nice with the Union City, Indiana side of Union City in order to promote job creation and to go out and offer, try to offer dual economic development incentives, whatever the case may be, to try to create jobs. I orchestrated the sale of Applegate Steel, a lot of people don't know this, to bring jobs to Union City in 2004. The company was going under. Aaron Applegate's one of my best friends, he asked me to get involved. I was involved with my economic development hat initially, realized the owner and the potential buyer couldn't get along. I actually stepped in the middle of that transaction. I bought Applegate Steel and brought it to Union City and sold it to the investor for zero profit. I didn't make any money on that deal. That was 107 jobs, I want to say at the time, that we bought. That was part of that deal as well. Orchestrated the attraction and expansion of Consolidated Metals and Union Tube Corporation. If you guys look at across from Bowser's Barn, the building that we started in, we come to call Consolidated Metals, bought that a couple of years ago, then they built that huge pole facility next to it, kind of gaudy. Formed a great relationship with the owner of that company, Wolfgang, and he, I was the first one he called when he said, "We wanna, we wanna put a tube mill in. Where should we put it?" I said, "Put it in industrial park. It'd be great if you had an industrial park." The building's going up right now. I'm a former member of the Union City Chamber of Commerce, Randolph Economic Development Corporation, Energize Indiana, which is a regional economic development board based in Muncie, former CIC Board Member, that's the Economic Development Group in Dark County, former Vice President of the Union City Alumni Board, Annual Speaker for the Ball State University Entrepreneurship Class. I've coached softball, literally, I've coached about everything you can coach around here. Arts Festival founding committee member as part of the UCCDC, and former UC Redefined Committee Member as well. As far as our future at EBS, it's looking pretty bright. You know, despite, I think this guy drove around, most ridiculous thing I've ever seen, dude, drove around on a Friday on the day that we don't work production.
I'm not attacking.
Hey, I'm talking, I'm talking.
So am I, so am I.
I'm talking. You can let me finish. I might be another hour. If you want to leave, leave.
Who are you?
Excuse me?
Who are you?
Hey.
Sit down.
Anyway, this clown drives around our parking lot and he's, and he's spreading rumors that we've got equipment up on skids, and he's, and he's trying to say that we don't have 200 cars in the parking lot. He comes on a Friday, we work four-hour days, our salary team is there on Fridays. All right? So, so that's the ridiculousness that's going on. So the future looks bright, as I said. We just signed a new five-year contract in June with a company called Boss, gonna become one of our largest customers for all-in-one machines, so we're gonna have a assembly line going on. We're also gonna be installing that equipment on chassis, that'll come, there'll be underdeck compressor installations. Create more jobs. We just got our QPRO certification with Fiat Chrysler, which made us the only alternative fuels company in the nation, to be able to say that. So that's another piece of business that's growing. Bev, we've got 30-some, 20-some vehicles coming in in a couple weeks. That's taken off already. We're designing a new Ram electric vehicle system. We also do electric vehicles out there you might know, with FCA and a company called Sea Electric. We're the only AM General certified assembler of civilian series Humvees that we're exporting to China now and have some, some aspirations of sending them elsewhere. We got new electric vehicle deals with our largest customer on the electric side, Motive, which is out of California, and then Sea Electric, which is based out of Australia. We got new CNG deals with Southwest Gas, Duke Energy, Piedmont Alpha Gas, Washington Gas, and others. We got a new LPG deal being finalized with Pace, which is Indianapolis Mobility Vehicle Company. New UPFIT project with a company called United Rentals. We've got other LPG deals being pursued on behalf of DHL with ProMaster Vans. New fab deals pending with VT Hackney and Aramark. We have a new LPG, which is a propane school bus repower program that we launched in 2019, it's the only one in the nation. And the USPS contract is anticipated to be awarded sometime in 2020. If that would happen, that alone, again, creates 100 jobs, hundreds of jobs, and would lead to other job creation with suppliers, et cetera, as I mentioned before. So we, we've done it again, we put together a world-class operation and a world-class team, most of them sitting right over there, that's allowed us to position ourselves for significant growth and success in the future. I'm proud of those accomplishments, and everybody in this room should be proud of that as well. Everybody should, because it benefits your community. We've enjoyed a wonderful relationship with this mayor and this council, just as we did with the previous administrations, Hoover and Dehaven. That's how it's supposed to be. You're supposed to have, they have a responsibility to have good relationships with the businesses, especially local, homegrown entrepreneurs like me who take risks in their communities. That's how a small community grows into a bigger community. Wonderful relationship. Over the years, we've, we've created hundreds of jobs in this community and we've invested millions of dollars. And you know what? We intend to continue to do the same. We've never gotten a nickel for free, as some of you like to say, and we've always met our financial obligations to any and all creditors, including the city, the county, and Randolph Economic Development Corporation. Here's another good one. Believe it or not, I've never filed for business or personal bankruptcy. You don't do that when you hit the lottery. You don't do that before you hit the lottery. It's never even crossed my radar. That, that one, that one's BS. So I think these rumors that are going around, I mean, I don't know why, I don't know why people exist like this, or, you know, why you spend your time trying to, trying to dig up crap or trying to bring somebody down. I guess you're jealous or envious or whatever that may be. So I would tell you, go get involved in your own communities, do, do a third of what I've done and you'll probably be better off, because spending, spending time trying to create rumors is a total waste of time.
Who are you?
Okay?
Yeah, we can talk.
All right? So anyway, these rumors, these rumors, I'm not done.
Hold on just a second.
Excuse me, state your name, your address.
16 West 11th Street, Muncie, Indiana. When your people call and have them problems, saying that your stuff's on skids and buildings out there, ready to be packed out, that's, you know, you didn't get involved when somebody called, until somebody's people called him.
There's nobody that called him.
Really?
My employees? I doubt it. Right there's our HR manager. So, so you guys want to run with some BS rumors?
You got six people?
I got 56 people.
So can I address that real quick?
I'm not done. I'm gonna finish. Let me finish.
Just let me finish and we're done. No, the mayor, the mayor's charged, said we can finish. Yeah, excuse me.
Have a seat over there.
All right. So here's the deal. First of all, all right, I'll go. So here's the deal. I don't have anything against you. You're right, I don't know you. You don't know me. You got up, I asked a question, and you started this off terse, that's why I've got that.
You went on social media blabbing lies, is why.
Just a second, just a question. So you're right, you didn't need to do this last 45-minute presentation, but I agree, you've done some really great things. I, I agree, it sounds like you've had some loss of serious situations in your family. So has everybody else. I agree. I applaud you for things that you've done. Here's, you said it right there, you don't have 200 jobs by the end of December 31st, 2019, which I think was the only question that some people here had that couldn't get answers to.
Let me finish.
Okay, are you gonna start a new?
I haven't gotten there yet.
Are you gonna start a new?
Let me address this, let me address this. It's not the end of 2019.
Right.
And so, you have, so why answer a question than when it's, nothing is due?
Well, what happened, you won't be there in 2019.
And, okay. Just let me finish. I address it in here. Alright, well, let, alright, so, so I'm wrapping up here, I got about, I got about forty-five more minutes, and I'll be back. All this being said, my family and I don't need, or my employees don't need to tolerate this BS that's been going on, really since we relaunched the business, it's been ridiculous. We're abiding by all contractual terms of the agreements we signed with the city, and we're paying back the loan amount prior to the due date, hopefully that answers your question. For those of you who don't know me, like you, I treat others the way I wanna be treated, I was raised that way. I help and support those who are less fortunate, and I'm extremely generous, to a fault sometimes. That's what growing up in a town like Union City with amazing parents teaches you, and I'm proud of that. That being said, I will hit back when I've been lied to, slandered, talked about, or cheated. So please stop with these crazy lies about me, my family, my finances, my community, and this administration. This negativity and coffee shop gossip has to stop. It does nobody any good, especially those who partake in it. Please focus on helping others in our community, and not criticizing those trying to make a, a positive impact. In addition to paying back every dime of this loan early this year, I've also decided to make donations to the Preservation Society, the Art Hub, and Union City Emergency Services, as a thank you to these folks for everything they've done, not just for our companies, but for this community as a whole. If you guys go to any event in this community, you're gonna see people like Kobe, Steve, Ted, Kim, I mean, this whole crew sitting up here, you see them there. They're not doing it for money, trust me. They're doing it because they love this community. So I'm gonna give back to those organizations. So we're, we're in talks with all three of those organizations on making a charitable donation by the end of this year as well. So once again, not only are we paying back the money, but we're gonna make an additional donation as a thank you to the community. So I wanna, I wanna address, I guess, those, those organizations as well as this council. Keep up the good work, as not gone unnoticed. We're gonna keep working hard as well, and I know this community will see through the BS that's been going on for way too long. I wanna thank the mayor, and most of this council for your support and cooperation over the years. I appreciate the relationships we've enjoyed, and I'm very proud of the accomplishments we've celebrated over the years. Chad, I look, look forward to doing the same with you, and your administration as well. You have a great council, I know you'll continue to provide the leadership we need to take Union City to the next level. I look forward to continuing that great relationship with you and your team. I also wanna congratulate Tito, Nathan, and Brandon for your election to council. You guys are gonna make a great addition. Tito and I had a lot of long talks this past summer, didn't we? And I told you this day would come. So, so anyway, I wanna thank you guys for your willingness to serve our community. Jan, and I wish Monty was here, Jan, Monty, Brad, I wanna thank you guys as well. You know, again, you know, Brian gets credit for one thing, he's assembled one hell of a team here, you know, over the years. Some of them were here already, but this is truly a great administration, have done great things for our community. You are all true professionals, you should be proud of your accomplishments. This administration's in great shape for the future, thanks to the tireless work of Mayor Conklin, his team, and those of us who truly love our community and wanna see it thrive. Bob Gentry, you're one of those as well. Bob's been on a lot of committees with me, haven't you? And he knows I talk a lot, so you're used to it. I encourage every Union City citizen here to stop listening to these armchair quarterbacks, who may not be doing anything for their communities, but like to, like to poke at everybody else. Stop listening to them, and get behind those of us who have made a difference, and will continue to make a difference, 'cause that's exactly what we're gonna do. This is how we're gonna move Union City forward. In closing, a couple things, I, I wanna mention my dad. My dad, Tony, unfortunately, we lost him in January. He would've so enjoyed being here tonight with his mom. He and my mom have been my biggest fans since I started PCI. Their encouragement and support can never be repaid. And they absolutely hated it, and they still hate it, when small-minded people make negative, ignorant comments about their son. So I wish he could be here. Dad would express this frustra-, it, it made them madder than it made me, I think, and they would express their frustrations to me, and I would tell them, "It's okay, it's okay, it's okay." Well, Dad always told me, "Son, there's gonna come a day where you're gonna have the opportunity to set the record straight, that will come, take advantage of it." 'Cause these people need to know what you've done, and what, what your, what your employees have done for this community. That day's today. I just wish he were here to see it. He always said, "Small communities should support those who take risk and have success, not attempt to tear them down." Once again, he was right, he usually was. Lastly, I'm gonna end with this. A good friend of mine named Brian Conklin gave me a few words of wisdom about ten years ago now, and it's, it's, it's something that hangs on my wall in my home office. In light of what's transpired here tonight, I felt these words best summarize how I live my life, and how I'm gonna be moving forward to continue to make Union City a better place for us all. These are called the paradoxical commandments by Dr. Kent Keith. Goes something like this. People are illogical, unreasonable, and self-centered. Love them anyway. If you do good, people will accuse you of ulterior motives. Sound familiar? Do good anyway. If you are successful, you will win some false friends and some true enemies. Succeed anyway. Honesty and frankness make you vulnerable. Be honest and frank anyway. The biggest men and women with the biggest ideas can be shot down by the smallest men and women with the smallest ideas. Think big anyway. People favor underdogs, but follow only top dogs. Fight for a few underdogs anyway. What you spend years building, someone could destroy overnight. Build anyway. People really need help, but may attack you if you help them. Help people anyway. If you find happiness, people may be jealous. Be happy anyway. The good you do today may be forgotten tomorrow. Do good anyway. Give the world the best you have, and you'll get kicked right in the teeth. These are fake. Give the world your best anyway. Brian, thanks for these very appropriate words, and thanks again for all you've done for Union City. This community thanks you for dedicating sixteen years of your life to making our hometown a better place to live, work, and play. Best of luck in the next chapter of your life and career, and God bless you and your family. Everyone have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I'm done.
I didn't start anything. I believe you did.
Okay, next on the agenda.
Let me go back down.
Visitors wishing a blessed account, address the board, please stand and state your name and nature of your business.
Well, two weeks in our, two times in a row, I'm disappointed.
Yeah, I got a question for you.
State your name and, and the nature of your business.
Last of the roster, living at Thousand Blue, West Oak Street. What's the status on the homes on Oak Street? The, I haven't heard much about it since.
There was, they put the sign up, there was some issues getting the title work and all that put together, and what else, had to redraw that up, 'cause the county wouldn't let us go with just merging two lots together. So that's, that was, that delayed it, now we're just waiting to get started.
And some of us through, I'm settling for, yeah, zoning appeals and stuff, and some of us through zoning, and also, just everything is kinda slimmed it out, there's things that has to be done before the state will approve it.
And the one other piece of the puzzle is, the state changed the law, which was effective in July, which we'd already had a decent process, to where we can use the, the tax revenue, what's called TIP, so they take the tax dollars that they generate to pay for the infrastructure that would go in there.
Okay, and one other thing is, is that land down there, is that contaminated in any way?
It was just a parking lot.
Yeah, it was emotionally hosed down through there, they were emotionally moved over onto the Davis Street, also over onto Turner Street, and the body company just made it into a parking lot for the employees.
In the remediation, yeah, it was all, it was, when the body company property went through remediation before it, that was tested, because it was part of that site.
Did they skim some of that off at one time?
That, I, I don't know.
Probably, they skimmed it off to put gravel in it.
Okay, is that what it was?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
No, thank you. Anyone else?
There's, um.
You gotta state your name.
I'm sorry, Scott Reagan, ten fifty-three Devoe. There's different properties listed under different names, like, the, the big building that was Dirk House kinda thing, across from, across from the Orson Park, that just, that's got one name, and then the, the property along Oak Street has a different name, that people own it, or what owns it, like UC Development, then there's UC something, I just wonder what the difference, in the difference of the names.
They're, they're not our properties. There is, there is an individual that has some rental properties, that he was divesting himself of, and putting him under LLC organizations, and without putting his name out there, he was just doing some things that.
But the, but the, um.
Are you talking about the yellow signs?
No, they're, like on, if you go to, whatever the thing is online, where you go and you see who owns what.
Yeah, yeah.
There's difference, there's two different, like, Union City Revitalization, and Union City something.
Oh, there's Union City redevelopment that has property.
What's the difference between the Union City redevelopment and?
That's the only thing that can own property, is Union City redevelopment.
No, there's two different ones, it's Union City, the city of Union City owns both of them, but, or I assume they own both of them. That's, there's just two different names.
Well, the, the house on the south side of Pearl Street next to. Are you talking, my voice is not going.
Are you talking about the property right over here in the corner, the three-story brick?
Four or three. That one's in Union City redevelopment.
But that's, but that's just one, but there's other ones that, the different lots and stuff, that's, that the city owns now, that are different than Union City Revitalization. There's like two or three different names out there, and I was just.
Should be just.
Without having the, the information in the computer, I can't.
We can get that information, if we get specific.
I didn't know where to go to find that, unless you went to the boardhouse to find it, but, I mean, I didn't know if it was all owned by the city, or if there was different individuals own part of it, or it was called Union City something, and individuals owned it, or.
Not that I'm aware of, no, I, I, I like to say I can answer, but I don't have the information.
It's, I didn't know, 'cause on, on Dirk County's website, you can go and you can research it, their website's a little bit better than Randolph County's, so, I didn't know.
Anyone else? Anyone?
Georgine Gaddy.
Just any address?
Georgine Gaddy, ten fifty-six Caroline Avenue. I'm a city employee, and I'm also pastor of Soul Bitter Church. I, I'm so saddened by what has transpired here today. I didn't come because there was a big explosion, supposed to be a big explosion, it's actually out of respect, this is the mayor's last council meeting. And I'm just saddened by the division that I feel in this room. We're all part of this community, our children go to school here, we live in this community together, and I've never seen this room so full. And it's sad that it's strife that has brought us all together. It's an honor to be in the presence of assigned dignitaries, because they're all under God. Everyone that is set up here before you has been God instituted, like it or not. And we have a new mayor coming in, and I pray that this is not the future that we're all gonna stand together for. Rob, you know, I don't know you that well, but it's always been a pleasure. I'm impressed by what God has done with your life, and by the blessings that you bestowed upon this community. I told my husband I would never come live in this community, but I also told God that, because I'm from a bigger community, which was Richmond, Indiana, Dark County.
I would never live there.
Right. Well, Monty Poyn is from that small community, Dark County, and he moved here, and he is my uncle. I didn't get this job because he's my uncle. Actually, I lived next door to the mayor, and they knew the part-time, and I needed the job. And so, he's invested his whole life into this community, because he loves it, he swears by it, there's something special here that's tangible. And now I've decided to start my church here, and my kids to have a future here. We want better for this community, we want more jobs, but everybody remembers the heyday of what Union City used to be, and you can't hold that grudge on one man, because one man trying to create harmony and disharmony, that's, that's not fair for us to do that, because he's not getting enough done. It's not up to one man. If each person would stand by and take ownership of this community, this community would soar. I gotta do that, you gotta do that, you all have to do that, and we do that together by taking ownership. There's plenty of committees, there's plenty of things we all can stand up and own, let's do that. And that's where we put our hope, that's where we put harmony, that's how we come together as a community. Let's do better in 2020. Sir, I don't know you, and I'm sure Winchester's a great community, but please, stop causing discord and sowing discord in this community. We love this community, and if, if all your results of all your findings, that you've been here, and it turns up nothing, let it turn up nothing, but please stop digging.
Stop digging.
I'm just saying, let there be peace, and let there be joy, and let there be a settling so that we may grow and move on and birth something greater. That's it, thank you.
Mr. Bilbo, you have anything to say?
Thank you.
You have an opportunity to talk in front of this group. You have an opportunity to make these requests.
Yeah, I, I.
And you, you have an opportunity when you make these requests, it's, it's almost insulting by the way you ask them.
Maybe.
In regards to, I've got something. Nate Conklin, Union City, five twenty-three and a half, West Oak Street, Union City, Indiana, I am a councilman-elect, also the director of operations for Equus Consulting Group. And, you know, eye contact is a very professional and polite thing to do in the world, and we should work on that, first off. Second off, I said eye contact is professional.
Okay, I didn't know if you're talking to me or them.
No, it's not towards them.
This is a council meeting.
It's towards your request. You want all contracts Equus has with the city?
With the city, no, I wanna know what.
Equus has zero contracts, it's a privately held company, and has never received funds from the city of Union City. If you have problems, feel free to contact us on the website, I'll happily break them down for you.
Well, here's, no, no.
That's all I got.
Alright, so let's address that then here real quick, since, since that's been addressed. My request was not towards Equus, my.
Equus. It's Equus.
Equus, okay, Equus. My, whatever it's called.
Tomato.
What's it?
Tomato.
Tomato.
It's not.
Tomato. Hey, will you shut up? You, you were insured, then get out.
I won't.
Then get out.
I'm, I'm, I'm involved with this conversation right now.
No, shut up. Go outside, just go outside.
Go ahead, go ahead, Bilbo, ask a question.
Alright.
Safe plea, in the name of Jesus.
Let's calm down, let's just calm down. So here's the deal. The request was not issued towards your company, it was issued to the city. So if the city, okay, so when the record of the, of the holder of the records, the clerk, contacts me and says that there are no contracts, then I will, that'll be great. Well, she says that, then I'll have that official record. You said that there's no contracts, and I take your word for it. I agree with that.
You can take anybody's word for granted, but.
That's good, but why ask for it? What's, what's your purpose in asking for that?
What does it matter?
I'm curious.
Okay, so it's a, okay, here's, here's the deal, let me, let me explain it to you like.
Can I make a request?
The public access council.
Wait, wait, let him talk.
The public access council of the state of Indiana outlines what records are public and what records are not public. This would be something, if this company had done work for the city of Union City at any point, been awarded contracts.
Why do you care about that?
Some kind of consulting.
That's my question, why do you care about that? Is this your job? Is this what you do?
Well, here's the deal, there's, I don't have to, the public access council of the state of Indiana, Luke, break you guys, you can call him if you need to, has stated, I don't have to tell you why I want this.
And they all know about the shoplifting.
So, yes, yes, we all know about it, I mean, the, the, I mean, Jesus was put on a cross, Kenny was killed and downed, so let's talk about a bunch of all the old news.
That's not old news.
No, it's brand news.
No, it's, it's, we're over seven years old. So let's now talk about this, okay? No, that, that.
You guys wonder what he says, his mugshot?
The mugshot was from arrested when I was, no, 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 no.
He was fired as a lost control spy. Alright, here. Alright. Rob.
That mugshot right there.
You're, you're three minutes rest. Public information.
It is public information.
Oni Barber, sixteen West Levin Street.
This is all Dan's fault, Dan called him.
Arrested at a city council meeting. Explained to somebody.
You wanna explain, Dan?
What is your name again?
Do you know him?
I stated it already.
Do you know him?
Oni Barber, sixteen West Levin Street.
Um, Muncie, Indiana.
Yes, sir.
And you are here for?
State of Indiana.
Oh, that's great.
I mean, the, I mean, Jesus was put on a cross, Kanye was killed and downed, so let's talk about a bunch of all the old news.
That's not old news.
So, let's, no, it's, it's, we're over seven years old. So let's now talk about this, okay? No, that's, that's...
You guys wonder what he says, his mugshot. He's got a felony, he was fired. He was fired as a lost control specialist. Alright. Alright. Rob.
That mugshot right there...
Your three minutes rest.
Public information.
It is public information.
16 West Levin Street.
This is all Dan's fault, Dan called him.
At a city council meeting. He lied to somebody, yeah.
You want to explain, Dan?
What is your name again?
Do you know him?
I stated, 16 West Levin Street.
Muncie, Indiana.
Yes, sir.
And you are here for?
State of Indiana, I've got the right to be here.
The city here?
I'm allowed to be here, I live in the state of Indiana, I am permitted to be here. Am I right, Mr. Attorney? Am I right?
I don't know. That's the law, I'm sorry.
You know.
I have something to say, I'm standing in the back shadow of all...
Excuse, whoa, 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 whoa.
My name is Scott McPritch, and I'm at six twenty-six West Pearl Street. Nice to meet you. Yes. The preacher here just stood up and tried to talk about God-loving people. And as soon as she sat down, it turned into sabotage city on all of you.
Right there's the guy started it.
Why, it doesn't matter who started it. I must say, Robbie, I went to school with you. I don't know you personally, but I can say as a citizen of this camp, this city here, who pays their bills as well, I go by your factory every day, because I'm out of this town every day. I don't see where you have two hundred employees, I don't really care.
We don't have two hundred employees.
But if I speak, then I speak...
Come on in sometime, I'll share it around.
So if you want to do that, that'd be great. But I, I don't...
She never calls back, don't worry about it.
See, why do you keep cutting people down? You don't know...
Because you're not welcome in this community.
Oh, we're not welcome, so my hundred thousand dollar house isn't okay?
It's people from Muncie, I'm not talking about you, go ahead.
That, you know, that, talk about investment, it was my personal investment, but a hundred thousand dollar house in this community was a risk.
We appreciate that, yeah.
A huge risk
That's great.
that I'm remodeling. And I hope your Oak Streets help my thing, to be real honest with you.
Iron sharp and iron.
Because I went through multiple sewer problems with this city, put a new sewer system in, and still had backup coming in my basement, even with the one-way valve. That's what I'm concerned about, is what are we gonna do about people's houses filling up with sewer? You can laugh if you want, Mr. Mayor, but it's true.
I'm laughing because I found a softball in your sewer line.
Because the neighbor bit it. But after it was fixed, I'm still having the same problem. And you think that's funny, that the neighbor put home me six thousand dollars?
This is the first that I've heard about it?
No, it's not, because over here, I was here when you went and cleaned the junk up next to me that somebody left you promised to do, and I had to remind you to do it.
It was on somebody else's lot, it was...
It was right next to mine, but it hurts my property that way.
You have one minute nine seconds, just so you know.
I'm done, I'm just saying. If we're gonna be godly, then we all need to be godly.
So are you done?
So let's keep it positive.
Absolutely. We can agree to disagree all day. We don't have to be ugly to people. I didn't, the problem is, we don't, it's not that you hate each other, it's the issues at hand that's disliked. Now, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Well, for my last meeting, it's actually this last month, a few people really need to thank the, for Kiss TV and the ratings.
We've been getting pretty good last few weeks.
I mean, the last meeting, they're probably disappointed, this meeting is... For the very last meeting, I, uh, would, I put a letter out to all the citizens of Union City that people say it was in the water and sewage bill, and really thanking the people that's, that live in this community who gave me the opportunity for the last three years. And I know there may be a few of you that may not care about how I manage things or whatever else, but you know, Union City is not in its place the way it was, you know, back, back in the eighties or the seventies or whatever else. It, we, we didn't just evolve this way overnight. It evolved over time. And, so, I'm just trying to make my little simple measure of moving things forward, cleaning the properties up, cleaning whether it's, you know, getting our drug properties cleaned up as well. And every community that's the size of Union City has the same issues. And if we don't all work together, because small minds can talk about people, great minds talk about great ideas moving things forward. I would, for the next council meeting, which is the date of Monday, January thirteenth, it'll be Chad's first meeting. And I look forward to, you know, working, working with the council and whatever else, if I have any ideas left. And I appreciate Chad stepping up and, because we were looking for somebody to run and, and came down to it, and Monty was gonna run, and Chad says, "Well, Monty, if you don't want to run, I'll, I'll run." And that, you know, that's a, that's a tall order. Then the other council members have decided to continue on. Appreciate that. And Jim, you know, did a heck of a job doing what you did.